Welcome, everybody, to the Blue Lake City Council meeting. Please stand for the flag salute. Thank you, everybody. Uh, city staff, please establish a quorum.
Councilmember Napier.
Here.
Councilmember Louis Luso.
Present.
Mayor Swatsky.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tenskafani.
Here.
We're all here and counted for.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda, or do we need anything moved around?
I'm fine with that. Motion to approve.
Second.
First and the second. Those in favor say aye.
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 It passes. All right, moving on to public comment. The public is invited to present positions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope and authority of the city of Blue Lake. Uh, this, uh, for non-agendized items. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To ensure that everyone has a chance to speak, we'll limit time to three minutes each. Uh, who would like to speak on public comment? Yes, Adeline, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Adeline Jones. I want to point out, um, in the nine-plus years that Mandy Mager was our manager, eight of those I was mayor. We had a balanced budget every year. In fact, it was always on time and it was under budget. Again, on time, under budget. This council has cost us tens of thousands of dollars in six months. Mandy Mager saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars with her grant-writing ability in her nine years as our manager. Now for some good news. At the last Chamber of Commerce meeting, we voted in Mandy Mager as one of our newest members of our Board of Directors. I am also on the board. Um, people who care about Blue Lake continue to work for the betterment of Blue Lake. Immediately after she was voted in, great ideas began to flow, like new banners for the light poles, um, that are now a little uh, old and faded out, so we're looking for new ones, and Mandy agreed to step up again and be the chairperson for our Annie and Mary Day Parade. She has lots of ideas, including possibly an announcer for the parade at the town square, since we have electricity there now. Other highlights of Annie and Mary Day were discussed that evening, doubling the track for the train. Um, rides, the great music as part of the Humboldt Folk Life Festival, and I have as now, uh, as of now, I have thirty craft vendors. We had fifty last year and fifty the year before. We are exactly one month away from Annie and Mary Day. It's August third. It's our fifty-sixth annual festival. Finally, um, as Chair of the Blue Lake Public Safety Commission, I encourage folks to enjoy the Fourth of July. I'm very patriotic, as you can see. Um, but be careful and be safe. You've seen our posters around town, I'm sure. Um, the bells, the church bells will ring at nine o'clock. We can celebrate the wonderful country that we live in, but please be safe, be kind, be careful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Kent, and, uh, and I have to say the offer that's been true regarding, uh, who our ex, um, mayor has been referring to here, uh, what's about to come out is, is we've actually been cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to now you folks are having to deal with with their budget. In the past, we budgeted five thousand dollars for legal expenses, and, and these are not things that you've been doing, but it's projected, I think, by the city manager that we're going to come up as much as a hundred thousand dollars of legal expenses. There's a reason for this. All of a sudden, the chickens are coming to roost. It's not your fault. So I'd like you to, if you have a chance, um, uh, go ahead and watch the supervisors' meeting last, uh, Tuesday, which I spoke at, and I spoke quite, quite. The path we're on now is the city of Blue Lake may be bankrupt. We have to do major things to avoid that, and this is left on you. This is a carryover from you, and you've inherited these expenses such as a hundred thousand dollars plus for a, uh, bike and a wonderful project, but all of a sudden, we've come to realize the money's there and we're owed it. They're owed it. I mean, we've incurred costs, and we were told consistently, uh, at a whole bunch of meetings, it was only three thousand dollars we owed. Um, we'll have other topics which I will speak on, but I wanted to read to you a little bit about economic development, and I deal with, this is my communication with Lisa Hayes, the C O of Humboldt County, they have a hundred, six hundred fifty-plus million-dollar budget. And this was, good morning, Lisa. Um, Blue Lake will likely be the tip of the spear for economic development. We are trying to take advantage of our biggest asset. We are where sunshine and sea air meet. Uh, we meet with Steve Madorna and Mike McGuire, will likely be putting Blue Lake back in. This hasn't happened in all these years. Nobody's even come close to addressing it, so we're working on that now, and you're working on it. We are working to, uh, plan a celebration destination. This is, this is where the money's made, and I, I had a very good productive conversation. So we wish to cater to weddings, canteen areas, reunions, birthdays, celebration of life, sporting events, et cetera. We, for example, have the ability to have a baseball, skating, rodeo, mountain biking, bike skate park, river destination wedding. We likely will be having a meeting with all wedding event planners locally here and statewide, national, as we develop the model. We'll be partnering with our tribal neighbors, unlike Humboldt County perceived to do, uh, to do this advantage. Uh, so, uh, Virginia Bass always said that had a thing, there's only so much honey in the honey pot, and I think we should grab our share and way more in Humboldt County. He said, we will be, we will help the bees, we will get the honey. And this is a project that we're working on. A lot of very people, Linda Cooley, uh, working with other people like, um, like, uh, uh, the Lager Bar and all these other places, basically go ahead and bring this to fruition. Uh, can you imagine having three or four destination functions here every weekend? And the amount of money people staying at a casino will be, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Who's next? For public comment, yes, Scott, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I would like to say that I support this council. I really appreciate the work that you're doing. And I think it's unfortunate that some of your predecessors can't keep themselves from coming here and harping at you at every council meeting, because I've watched the last two meeting recordings. So eventually, we'll get through this, but thanks for what you're doing now because it's needed. The unfortunate, bad fiscal policies that were pursued for the last six, seven years that I'm aware of are coming home to roost. Scott Frazier, Blue Lake Boulevard.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on public comment? No dice on Zoom, right? Okay.
I could pitch it through the window, but I don't think that'll help.
All right. Um, I'm gonna reserve a little bit of time in case we get Zoom back up for public comment, so can we resume that if we do get access to Zoom? Again, and we'll just take public comment on the closed session items.
Yeah.
Is that legally okay?
There.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, does the public wish to comment on the closed session item? Yes, go ahead.
And Kent, again, we don't know what this topic is. The public doesn't, you folks do, and I trust you to deal with closed session in the best interest of the city. So, uh, when I go before the Board of Supervisors, I can always hypothesize on what it might be, and, uh, we've had some, some very poor decisions made, uh, by prior management and by the city council. And, and this, this basically came down to being on the shoulder.
This meeting is being recorded.
Oh, good. Um, this came, comes down to being on the shoulder of your, your city manager and your mayor. They're the main ones. So multiple times, we came before them, we came before the Safety Commission, and we said, you need to secure the plant down here, the thing, and of course, we had a loss of life there. They didn't listen to us. They decided not to secure it. So I, I said, I said, you know, I went and said, I, I wanted to talk to people like Billy Hauston and other people in law enforcement. I said, well, what is, what is, how are we culpable for this? When you're told something isn't, you don't correct it, you are culpable for it. And, uh, I, I eventually, these people such as the city manager and the mayor are the main ones, but other people involved here may find that, uh, they're, they're guilty of, of, um, negligent homicide. When someone dies and you've been told, you don't fix it, that's the position you're in. And that's unfortunate that we're there. Uh, and I know they keep going, say, we need to fix it now, but they should have fixed it before somebody died, and so uh, I highly recommend that anybody who's involved in this, will most likely, if this is the topic, comes before a case, will be questioned by the courts, and I would plead the fifth, because if you're culpable of that, you lose your diplomatic immunity. And, uh, and of course, there's a potential imprisonment for five to ten years for the charges that may have been involved here, so uh, this is not a small issue, and people will have to defend themselves. They will have to spend their whole life savings for their inaction when they should have. And, and I just, I just want to say, let's learn from other people's mistakes and make sure we don't put ourselves at jeopardy and put yourselves, your own financial being and your personal freedom at jeopardy in the future. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hate to be so much doom and gloom, but this is pretty much a fact, and it's how our society works these days.
Thank you. Uh, one clarification, Danny, can we give the public any input on this item? I just feel strange letting them talk about something that may or may not be related to the closed session, but they obviously don't know what the closed session is.
I put, I put what the attorney told me I can put.
All right, does anyone else wish to speak on the unknown closed session item? Um, yes, Alex, are you raising your hand?
Yeah. Who is the attorney in attendance at the, uh, closed session tonight? We're supposed to name them.
Uh, Danny, do we know who that is?
I'm a little preoccupied right now, trying to fix this, if you guys don't mind.
Ethan Walsh up there. I do see Ethan Walsh up there.
Yep.
Ethan Walsh.
Yes.
Rush Gans.
Yeah.
And Russ.
And Russ, and Russ Gans.
He's, he's, Ethan Walsh.
Ethan Walsh and Rush Gans, yes. Is that your, is, correct, is that your, that's your question?
Yeah.
That's okay.
I think it works now.
Great. Um, any further public comment on the closed session item? I am gonna give Zoom a opportunity to speak on the public comment, just because we did have Zoom difficulties. Any other, uh, comments from the public here before we take it up to Zoom? Great. Uh, Julie, do you want to, um, make a, um, comment on the closed session item or on the, um, public comment?
My closed session will occur at that time.
Repeat that, I apologize.
Um, yes, good evening, evening, everybody. I, I appreciate. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Julie, we can't hear you. Um, anyone else would to speak on, okay. Um, let's see if anyone else wants to comment on public comment. Seeing none, all right.
Looks like it's our internet.
Does anyone want to make a motion to go into closed session?
I would move that we go into closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any final public comment? Hearing none? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming. We're going to closed session. Do we have a time, um, expected, Danny?
However long you take with it, I don't know. Sorry.
Yep. Um, sorry about that.
I'm guessing seven fifteen-ish.
Right, Justin? Welcome back, everybody, from the closed session. Uh, the council entered in the closed session but took no reportable action at this time. Um, moving on to, I, sure, I think so. Are they allowed to comment?
Nope.
No.
I don't know if this is a public comment thing.
Well, everything that's agenda, on the agenda, listed in public sessions can be commented on by the public.
Right, but we did.
Brown Act, you want to check it?
We did public comment on the closed session item before the closed session.
If this is coming out of closed session and it's agendized, that means the public can speak to it.
Can we err on the side of caution and just allow Mr. Rick to speak?
Yeah.
Please use the mic or if you can, you have a mic if you need to make your ears smile.
Um, I had one, but, um, you're welcome to, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. My mic is blinking green. Did I do something? Oh, now it's solid.
Nevermind.
Uh, yes, you want me to start the three-minute timer, Alex?
Uh, let me start.
Sure.
What I've given you here are three pages from the state of California's Brown Act website. Okay? If you look on the first page, seventy-one, you'll see that I don't, section five, four, nine, five, six dot nine is titled closed section, it's closed session pending litigation. Then you turn to page seventy-three, and you see that thi- this section, five, four, nine, five, six point nine, runs another approximately a third of a page to the following section. Now, look at your agenda. It's closed session item, conference with legal counsel, anticipate, anticipated litigation. So we're in the right, right section here, or that. Now, look at the two subsections that are listed with the agenda item. And five, four, nine, five, six point nine, parentheses, lowercase d, parentheses two, and parentheses d, lowercase d, parentheses three. Now let's scan down these two and a half, this page and a half, okay, quickly. The first page, seventy-one, you don't see any subsections at all. Come over here on page seventy-two, and you see a list of them running down the page. And I'm not going to run through them, but you can all look at them and see it there, too. You come over here on the last page, you have one subsection with parentheses c, and then two without any designation. Now I want you all to try to show me where the agenda items on, uh, the agenda, the subsections, parentheses d, lowercase d, parentheses two, and parentheses lowercase d, parentheses three are in this section that you have agendized. They're not there. They're not there, which means, which means, folks, your agenda item in closed section will not agendize correctly. And that is a violation of the Brown Act. No matter if it's incidental or not, it is a violation of the Brown Act. Now, I have no idea who's responsible for it, nothing at all. But it's going to be included in my response to the city attorney's response to my cure and collect letter. All right, because uh, one of the consequences of a missed agendized, uh, agenda item is that it becomes null and void. So just whatever occurred in that is endangered by this. I'm doing this in the, uh, spirit of transparency and because you guys really got, got to sharpen up your act, okay? This is really careless. So thank you for the time, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Swatsky, go ahead. Just so you guys are aware, the timer is not going off, so verbally let you know when it goes off.
Thank you. That's great. Um, just so you know, uh, the agenda in the past has been used very loosely. I brought it forward to people. You have a pledge of allegiance, and are we entitled to make a comment every single time on that? Uh, have we seen no forum where that's allowed or normal? Uh, nor have I ever seen any, uh, report out of closed session being open to public comment itself either in any of the forums, and I've attended sixteen years of supervisors' meetings. I'm not for sure. I've seen D three all the time as far as different kinds of litigation, possibly, uh, somebody can, can further educate, uh, Mr. Rick up where I'm guarding D three, but it's, it's a real standard one, and it's in there, and I've looked it up myself before. Uh, in the prior, prior thing regarding agendas, we had city council meetings before where the whole last three or four items were agendized by the prior mayor were basically ignored, such as future agenda items and all these kinds of things. We just got to end the meeting, just marched right through with no public comment. So anyway, I, I trust you folks, and I trust your attorney prepared that for you, and, uh, and maybe, maybe I will take the time again to look up what, uh, small d, small three is, and, and we can all be educated to which topics those are. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Great, thank you.
I have the rest of my three minutes to respond.
You, you used them, I'm sorry.
I didn't go my three minutes.
Yeah, you did. I'm, 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 I'm outside. The timer went off and I didn't say anything.
I'll just comment on this.
You can find it on. Can you come up here, please, to the microphone?
You can, you can find it on codes.finelaw.com, and there is a D, one, two, three, and four that you can read through and see exactly what's in those sections.
Um.
Where is it?
It's in California Code Government Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, and if you scroll down, there's a section D, one, two, three, and four, or all listed in there very clearly as subsections.
Yes, but they're not the same concept. This is.
Alex, Alex, you guys talk about it later. Appreciate it, thank you. Julie, go ahead.
Thank you for your guys' patience. I think it was kind of rude of our original speaker to just jump in and not give you guys even time to call the meeting back to order during closed session. Maybe I missed that, but, um, and, and Alex, do do some due diligence. If you do go back onto our city website and review the commissions and, um, city agendas that were posted, obviously, prior to this council, um, do me a favor, homie, keep track of all the ones council never gave us. Those are the great ones, and you know what? We also didn't get videos for those either. Maybe ask your friend sitting next to you why we never bought those, and if she feels that's a conflict of interest.
Great.
So we're, we're.
Julie, do you have, Julie, Julie, thank you, Julie. Um, all right, let's go ahead and move on to, is, is there any further public comment at this point? Great. Uh, can we, um, consider ad hoc committee, uh, item number seven, consider ad hoc committee for city manager recruitment discussion action item?
Uh, I didn't do an agenda report because literally I'm just asking you guys to pick two of you to be on an ad hoc so that we don't have to call a closed session or a special meeting every time you want to talk about the recruitment.
Okay, let's see here.
How many ad hocks are we on? How many do you have?
I have, well done. Let me go back to the notes. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ad hocks currently existing.
Great.
Seven?
Well, I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring. Um, I was impressed with the work that Tripeppy Smith did with HCOG. Um, I definitely have worked in recruitment before, and I have excellent availability to respond to Tripeppy Smith at any time that they need, so I'm not expected on travel, et cetera.
Um, I'm interested in serving on that committee as well.
Um, Michelle?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would like to have a balanced approach to this, and I'm not sure of my bandwidth for this one. Um, but if I had to choose between the other one and this one, I would probably choose the city manager recruitment. But I'm up. I'll, I'll be on another ad hoc. That's not a problem. Just put me where you want me.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna open this item up for public, uh, input. Does anyone wish to comment on the city manager recruitment ad hoc that we're forming? Seeing, uh, one, Julie, Christie, go ahead.
Yes, um, I, I definitely approve of it, and I appreciate you guys moving forward. Was there already a motion for, um, who is gonna be on the ad hoc?
There is, there is not yet. We've had some people throw their hats in the ring.
Okay, sweet. I still approve it. You there are. You guys are all great to be on. Thank you.
Great. All right, last call for public comments, seeing none. Um, I'm going to put, it's my job to select who goes on, just sure. I'm gonna put Elise and Kat on the city manager recruitment ad hoc. All right, um, moving on to.
Yes, go ahead. Vaughn, um, is, in order to also reflect the council members that aren't present, can we get them to submit some letter or questions or any other concerns before meeting with Tripeppy Smith? Or it sounds like Tripeppy Smith pretty much works with all of us together to flesh out the recruitment process.
Right, um, and I think that an initial meeting and a report back, but yeah, if, if, if John or Michelle had any particular concerns, you can think of any, you can maybe tell us now.
My only comment would have been to just not limit it to one avenue. Uh, that would have been my, my approach.
Not limit recruitment?
Yeah. So, but here we are.
Can we have a discussion around this? We probably can't.
Probably.
As it, as it pertains to the formation of the, um,
so, I mean. Committee, I mean, what is the ad hoc committee going to do? Are we gonna, we're gonna work with Tripeppy Smith, or we're gonna work, um, on the recruitment in other ways? I mean, I don't, I mean, I, I think we.
I think that this is to facilitate, um, continued forward motion with Tripeppy Smith. Um, and that there will be, Tripeppy Smith will also, uh, work with all of the council members. I assume it would be in a council meeting, and I don't know if it'd be closed session because potentially it has to do with personnel or not. That would be up for the attorney to determine. Um, so there will, it, it, this ad hoc should not preclude the involvement of other council members. So, and I think that's the very point of working with Tripeppy Smith, that it brings everybody into the conversation. It gets everybody in, it kind of helps um, a council to come to a group decision on what they're looking for.
But the recruitment is limited to a narrow scope of just Tripeppy Smith. And i- is that my understanding of what the purpose of this ad hoc is going to do is just work?
Oh, I see, yeah, because it doesn't have that.
It, it's just recruitment, and so I was broader than that.
I mean, ostensibly, should a Tripeppy Smith thing not work out or don't, not go forward for whatever reason you decide? Because it's not like you guys have inked a contract yet, um, then this would be the ad hoc that helps steer that process moving forward.
Any further questions? And just to confirm, are we having sit-down meeting with them before we?
That is the goal.
Okay, thank you. And that, and they will be doing that, or all of us will be doing that?
I haven't heard back from Ryan yet.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item if everyone's ready.
So I guess, just going back to that, I would assume that because there was an action item to move forward with, asking Tripeppy Smith to come, that that process is already moving, and the recruitment piece would involve maybe a broader approach. So that was my impression.
That more, uh, this was his recommended, his recommendation that you form an ad hoc for this process.
Okay, and can you, can you look in your notes and remind us at our last meeting, our, our action was to move forward with Tripeppy Smith, was it not?
Yes.
I was voted on.
Thank you.
And, uh, to be clear, that was, uh, I don't know if Danny also received that email, but in an email to me from Ryan, he had suggested an ad hoc so that rather than incur more attorney's fees, and it also allows us to move that process forward quickly, so that's the genesis for that.
Right, okay, okay.
We're ready to move on to eight? All right, let's move on to item number eight, consider ad hoc committee for housing element rezoning process. What, Danny, is this exactly?
So this one is another recommendation from Ryan, I believe, and the goal for this is to help start setting the dates and scheduling for the things, and that way we can start moving forward on that.
Is this, this is for our, um, housing element? Yes?
Yes, and making sure that if we need to respond to HCD, then we can go to the ad hoc and, you know, avoid serial communications in between meetings about this topic.
Michelle, no interest with HCD?
Um,
ideally, somebody who's gonna be here on Monday, because that's when our next meeting with HCD is gonna be. Ideally, somebody who's going to be here on Monday, because that's when our next meeting with HCD is going to be.
What time on Monday?
At three thirty. That was the soonest available.
I'm not available.
Ah, Kat, do you want to?
Um, I, I can be available for that. Sure.
Sure, we, we, I guess we need to open up for public discussion. Just seeing, so you're not available, you're not available. Does the public wish to comment on this item? Yes, go ahead. Natalie, why don't you go first?
I guess neither of us have commented.
Okay, Julie Christie, go ahead.
Thank you, guys.
To everybody in house, I really do appreciate Zoom. I wish you guys could see everything I do while you're in there and I do appreciate it very much. Um, for getting onto Monday, yeah, whoever has time, I understand a busy schedule and short notice. I do appreciate doing these incremental, um, bringing ups of our housing element and coming into compliance. I would hopeful that during that meeting, maybe it could be disclosed to HCD. The process that we really have had, maybe our planner can actually. Um, show everything that commissions and council changed and edited because it's been minute and our town halls and disclosures on that. I think we really need to up our game with everything, but until we get some comfort with the zoning. And we get some comfort with the cal, that what the state's actually mandating that we implement. Um, I don't think anybody's installing this out. I think a lot of it has been uncomfortableness with the process, the fact that. It hasn't really been disclosed and edited out. Like speaking to the prior. I watched a lot of the other municipalities, you guys, I bring it up all the time during the meeting. Some of you know that because you've been around. And in comparison for our housing element update, we have been in huge neglect. I've been trying to use the examples HCD actually has on their website. The examples that they promoted that we use during our implementation time and drafting time. That I wish we would just use their examples and, um, that would clear up a ton. That would clear up a lot. Thank you.
Very much. Who would like to speak next? Does anybody want to? Does anybody want to comment?
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe. Somebody go.
What ends up happening is I make a statement and then the person that wants to go after me discredits my statement. Anyway. I just want to reiterate that there were a lot of people blaming, are now blaming the past council for not taking action. Those are the same people that would have complained had we taken some action. Um, we tried to do our due diligence and what happened was we passed it on to the new council. Thinking that was something that they would like to take on as their first real action. Um, everyone knows how I feel about housing. I think it's very important. I think we need to move as soon as possible on getting housing in Blue Lake. It's a real need. There's so many people that need affordable housing in this town. They're just one rent away from, from being gone from Blue Lake and that's a shame. I want to see a vibrant town. I want to see children in our school. I don't want to live in a retirement home. I want to see firemen and people working, fire, fire workers that have a place to live. And staff people that can live here in town as well. So I hope we move quickly on this.
And it's not so much angst at the last minute.
Just to confirm, this is about the, the housing rezoning?
Of course it is. And again, uh, as the prior speaker said, it, it's not a major concern of, of last minute being transferred to you folks. But this has been delinquent for, for I don't know how long since two thousand nineteen. I mean, it was supposed to be done by twenty, so that's major concern. I did wish to speak to the fact that you're doing the rezoning and, and, and I think in the zoning, it's really important. And I did not see this incorporated, but somehow to, to work, to get the diversity, equity and inclusion component. Into your zoning. And, uh, that's, that's a, a basic, basic thing. The zoning is what implements that. The criteria you have for your ozone or things and the zoning of the lot should, should reflect that. And the biggest problem we have with diversity, equity and inclusion is if you're going to have a buy right project. Then in my, in the opinion of many people in the state, then you should have all levels of people living together, all different things. That's a basic concept within the state. We don't seem to reflect that. So while you're zoning, possibly projects that are ten or larger. Should have at least ten percent of each different economic group of all four in there. So that's the suggestion is just far as your zoning. You might have to tweak some zoning itself to accomplish the diversity, equity, inclusion. Of course, it's a, a term that prior staff hated. But creating a poverty pocket where you have all the, all the people living there, it, it, of, of very lower means is not really appropriate. Um, so if they're going to have a buy right, then that I think that should be included in there. And there's a, a few other things that have to do with zoning also that maybe in the future we'll have during public comment. Discuss a few other, other things that would be really good to incorporate within our community. To basically have the overall governing property of diversity, equity and inclusion. So that's my concern. Just didn't reflect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last call for public comment before, yes, go ahead.
You know, the concern for, you know, this being passed on so long, but even looking at some of the things that come from the state. And then looking at our housing element, I would. I don't know, just encourage the council to maybe think about an ad hoc committee, might be two of you. But it doesn't seem like the community was involved very much in the process before. And I feel like if it's just an ad hoc committee for two council members, that throws it all back on your shoulders again. And I think that's concerning. So can it be an ad hoc committee that would include community members? So they could take some of that burden off of you and maybe come up with ideas and research and looking at it. Uh, you know, so that two people don't just have to do that. So that's my.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that an option, Danny, to include in community members in a ad hoc? I know. Yes.
I worked for sixteen years for the Arvoc Sanitary District and we went through a similar process when we were trying to decide where our sphere of influence should be. And what properties should, shouldn't be added to them and where we wanted to do our annexations and expand our jurisdictional boundary. And our ad hoc committee did include two members of our board of directors and then we had four members of the community that were a part of it. So that, and we picked these different groups and then those groups got to put somebody forward onto the, the committee. So that it really was a broad spectrum of it was in our community down there.
Great, thank you.
I think we talked about that.
Well, I know they did it for the PowerPoint anyway. I shouldn't talk too much on that. Um, that is an option, correct? I mean, probably not on the negotiation side of things, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is really more targeted towards, you know, scheduling and process oriented things, not. Actually, you guys are going to be the ones doing the housing element or you are going to do the rezoning process.
Okay, great.
Yeah, no, you're just.
Thanks for clear.
Helping to schedule and make sure we're moving forward.
Great, thank you, Danny.
Thanks for doing background research.
Anyway, I don't know. We probably shouldn't have had too much of a discussion. We're just forming the ad hoc.
Clarify what we're going to do. I mean, I get that, like, you're going to have a meeting and you need to have council members at the meeting, so. And that, and that meeting, yeah, and that meeting may not be appropriate for community members.
Right.
Um, so, um, but there's going to be other opportunities perhaps to involve community.
Yeah, that will come later. This is strictly just for internal negotiation purposes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Elise is out of town. You are going to be out of town. Kat is available. I can be available. So me and Kat will be on this ad hoc.
Okay.
At least for now, I suppose. Cause that's the other thing with an ad hoc, right?
Let's, uh, yeah, to kind of, I think I'm going to get to the end of your point, which is we can focus on this timeline with HCD. And it doesn't have to be so expansive. It's all a housing element. Let's just get through this process.
Yeah, we're just trying to get through the immediate future.
All right, awesome.
Great.
So we have two ad hocks.
And I'd just like to, just in terms of ad hocks, so when the ad hoc has privileged information and they can't share it with others. Um, we all come into a meeting in an open session and we can share then. And then if, if somebody needs off an ad hoc or whatever at that point, because they don't have the time or whatever. We can reform with different members. Once we've, you know, we've come together and shared everything that there is to share. Now there's, you know, there's no privilege. There's no Brown Act, you know, issue at that point. I just keep that in mind going forward so that we don't get overburdened for whatever reason.
Yeah, your ad hocks are not carved in stone and nor do they have to last forever.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budgetary study sessions, like discussion.
Everybody's most favorite part.
All the favorite thing. All right, what do we got?
So the budget that was in your packet is the only change to it since the last time we met was to add in the recruitment. Fifteen thousand dollars, which I split evenly between water sewer and government because that's where your city managers hours come from. In the budget. So five K to each of those. Um, that's the change that was made since the last time.
Were you able to, uh, give us details on the rent of property?
I have those right here. So park facilities budgeted income is, uh, nineteen thousand eight hundred of that. Is rent for facility use and the doghouse.
So could you give us a page number, please?
Page twenty?
Yeah, it's.
And then if you don't mind repeating that as we get caught up, thank you.
No worries. So your park facilities. Um, budgeted income on your page twenty there, that is your nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for rent. And use of the doghouse. Uh, so rent is the, for the crash hall that is not skate parties. Um, because we do rent for non skate things. So that's going to be, uh, or like the picnic benches or the stage, that kind of stuff. That's going to be in that, in that number. Um, and then the. Concession stand that's currently being operated by the doghouse.
And so that's pretty much a solid predictable income.
It's pretty solid and predictable.
Projected in the budget. Sorry, I'm just going to kind of hijack this whole piece because this is marked. Um, so we, the budget, we budgeted anticipating twenty five. And then we got ten.
Part of that was because we weren't able to rent the commercial kitchen facility in Crash Hall.
Because of the permitting and the upgrades that needed to happen.
That's where, that's where the rest of that would have come from is being able to rent on that scale. But now that we have that addressed, we'll be able to rent on that scale.
Okay. One more, it's kind of a bigger question and then I'll settle down. Uh, where in here is the park, the bike park?
The bike park is not its own line item. It's part of the general.
Is that the information that we have? I mean.
It's not.
Okay.
Mostly because we're not spending city funds on it.
We're not.
Yeah, we're, it's, we're, we're spending donated funds on it.
Awesome.
So we don't typically. It's not our city funds. We're not budgeting for donations.
Thank you.
So park facilities, does that include the fields and, um, I guess there's a special item, line item for Little League?
Yeah, Little League is its own thing.
But that would include anytime anybody rents the park. For a music festival, for a picnic, for a wedding, for whatever.
Yes.
Right? And does that also include, um, the, uh? The arena?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think like Jim Canna Arena, that, that area, I believe that's all lumped into park facilities.
Okay. So, um, all right.
You don't have those kinds of detailed reporting, like this much from the, from the doghouse, this much from the facility.
Him, but it's, it's not a report I can just pull. I'd have to go pull several reports and then make a spreadsheet and then put the spreadsheet and give you a total.
As a side note, if, if, if there's any kind of budgetary software program that. More user friendly that we can, that you would, that you would recommend.
That's a whole other conversation for a whole other time.
I, I'm really struggling to kind of keep up with some of the.
I have software recommendations, but we're really not there yet.
Uh, without having to get into what we collected, but could we at least get under, uh, since we're talking on park facilities? Um, identify each item that is collecting a rent and what that rents for.
What, how do you mean? I believe I just answered that question when I said to Michelle, I have to pull many reports and then sort them into spreadsheets to get you that information.
No, I meant it's like, so it was called, hey, I want to rent the horse arena. How much is that? And you would say X amount of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
So like having that information.
Oh, yeah, that's on the website and I can get, I can have Emily send you guys an email. Um, but yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head.
But not just for that one, but for all of the ones that go into the park facilities. I know you were looking at the, um, looking for some low hanging fruit as far as, you know, the, uh, the Airbnbs, making sure they pay. They're supposed to pay to the city. And then that's something that I know there's so much work that staff has to do in maintaining these and the amount of money and materials. Equipment and maintaining these. And so really making sure that, uh, we're at the upper threshold of what we are allowed to.
Yeah, we are for those. As far as building permits and fees, we're not there, but for, for parks and rec. That's the only fees we've touched this whole time. And so those are quite competitive compared to our other fees for other things. Um, we are, our park facility fees are, and you know, rents are very competitive with surrounding area. What they charge for the same.
It's been about two years since we kind of, we looked at that and kind of revamped all those.
Right.
Kind of brought them into the, you know, kind of up to date.
Yeah, so those are the most recently adjusted.
What, what about utilities on these rentals? Um, now I know like short term rentals for. The park for maybe a weekend, utilities isn't really an issue, but like with the doghouse where, um, where it's a constant thing is.
That's factored into the rent cost.
It's factored in. So there aren't meters that.
No, we don't have sub meters for any of that. That would be an endeavor.
So, and on page twenty one for donations. Um, we had, uh, sixty five thousand dollars under Parks and Rec fees, it's sixty five thousand dollars. Projected to two thousand and then.
That's where the, the bike park money has come in.
Okay, so.
So we are counting the donations.
But not the costs.
We're, we're counting, we're counting the costs, but they're like spread into the whole spread for park facilities. Which encompasses many GL codes, depending on what kind of service was rendered. So it's, it's, every expense in government gets coded out to like up to twenty different places. And depending on what it's for. And so that makes it a lot harder to get like granular when you're trying to track things. Unless you have a specific project you're tracking, it gets a lot harder. So we tend to track those things as a separate thing from the budget. If we're trying to track a specific project.
But when it's, sorry.
Please go ahead.
But when, I mean, I guess the confusing thing for me is when we're trying to look at a budget and budget for things and we, then we see this income. And but we don't see the costs and we know that this income is going to be earmarked basically for.
Yeah, and it's already all gone out.
Right, and so we're anticipating twenty five in donations.
In the next fiscal year, um, that's, that was the accountant's best guess.
Okay.
It should be higher than that, but because of what needs to happen, what's left with the bike park, but, um. There's certain like rules and formulas when we're trying to do income estimating. And so it, it's kind of hard to. We can't just like, well, we need the four hundred thousand. It's gonna be four hundred thou, you know, like, you can't pick a number and say that's what it's gonna be.
And I'm trying to, I'm, sorry for being so obtuse and.
It's totally cool.
Bonehead, but I'm like.
You want to understand.
Yeah, right. So I'm sorry.
No, it's totally cool.
For others that are. Following. Um, yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted clarity because that's my thought, that was what was happening, but yeah, okay.
Danny, for legal, are we, do we have a breakdown or is there just like a base rate? Like, do we know like what project it went to or if it was like.
For what?
For just legal in general?
Those are legal fees?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so those get spread too, depending on what, what it was for. Like some of our legal fees are cost recovery for planning and, and building and engineering projects that go through permitting process. So those will be, uh, you know, those are, get put under your, our cost recovery fees. Um, that, that's our current service charges there for attorney fee. Um, that, that's our current service charges there for attorney fees, that's stuff that's been cost recovery under legal fees. Our general legal fees, when we're talking about in the general fund, that's all things that did not apply to uh, one of the other funds, basically.
But um, I think to piggyback on your question, John. Is it possible or when the law firm bills us out, do they, and let's say that they were billing for forty hours, do they identify if it was for subject A, like whether.
Oh, yeah, it's all broken out and it all gets coded just like every other expense.
And I'm assuming dates, specific dates.
Oh, yeah, their billing is by the minute and has all the details and then Vicky and I sit down and we sit there and go, okay, this project goes to this GL code, this goes to this GL code. So we go through every invoice line by line and code them individually to what they're actually going to.
Would it be too much trouble for you to provide um, I guess essentially the billing copy from the attorney so that we could rather than seeing it, you know, having it pushed into the GL codes, but to see how they've billed for each of these topics so we can better understand?
I mean, right now, yes, that would be a burden.
Okay.
I have way too much on my plate currently. We're like, we're lucky we have a budget in front of us.
Um, do you know when that might be?
Uh, I, we can.
Just, just don't even talk about it.
Let's talk about that after you get your city manager recruited.
So are we, the general fund is projected to face a significant deficit of a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars.
That is. That's why we're having a study session to talk about this. And you know, identify areas where we can probably have to trim things. Um, there are also one thing that has not been accounted for in this budget is we have not yet received for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Caltrans, which will affect that number at the end of this because basically we're we're acting like we've pulled it from this year because we never got the reimbursement last year. And that's what's part of what's throwing us into our deficit.
That's good to know.
So uh, I found our, I found our thing that says we're do that money and I called Caltrans, I said, hey, where's our money? Uh, and they are cutting us a check and we will have that.
Okay, you could have led with that.
When should we have had that?
Uh, usually they disperse those sooner in the year, like May, before the end of the fiscal year usually, but for some reason ours got missed.
Great, great.
That's okay, we'll get it though.
And where, what funds does that money go to?
That one's primarily gonna go into our um, streets and all of that stuff, public works.
Um, so that's general fund.
Some of it's general fund because it's reimbursing for stuff we pulled out of the general funds to fund the projects that get covered.
Do we have any plans to mitigate the reduction in other state grants?
Right now, it's a focus on revenue recovery. Uh, like I said, addressing our billing, uh, building and planning fees, addressing other cost recovery fees, T O Ts, those kinds of things, those are gonna be the immediate solutions. Um, moving forward, we're going to have to really work on our economic, economic development game. Um, that's really the only place that we can go that's not pulling from federal state.
Um, I noticed uh, a couple of, well, okay, I'm on page twenty four.
Okay.
Um, for the parks, park facilities department and for the recreation department. Just noticing some bumps and some, some dips and bumps in the salaries.
Yes.
And wages, and I'm guessing that we lost a couple and then we gained a couple.
We had some changes in personnel, but also um, we've had some changes in public works personnel. So previously when we were having um, folks that were doing parks maintenance from our public works department, it was their time was getting coded to public works. We've since changed that so that they're getting coded to the appropriate place where their labor is actually going.
Okay.
So that was one of the big changes. So we pulled a bunch of park labor out of public works and put it into uh, department four, four, five, which is recreation. And then um, we did have, we did get a reduced amount of the calorie cycle grant. So that took a, some of that was ta-, uh, staff time was getting funded to that. Uh, and now that that's reduced, that's gotten moved back to fund for, uh, department four, twenty five.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're keeping up with all of us because this is a lot.
Yes.
A lot of shifting of things that I'm, I mean, thank you for the information now, but.
Absolutely.
Um, again, if, if we had a program to generate some reports that kind of were self explanatory, you know. It's not you, it's not on you. It's just like, oh, this is a lot of work.
Yeah, so it's a little bit more than it could, could be. And we were doing it a little differently, but we're, where we're at.
Kind of ask you to sort of restate what you just said because um, it was a little confusing. So you said that public, um, some of the public works time was not getting coded, some of their facility maintenance time was not getting coded to facilities, was getting coded to public works, so you changed that.
Yes, we.
But now in recreation department, you said something about recreation.
So in record, so we shifted the, that's recreation is um, part of that. Like the mowing the fields and things, that's recreation instead of park facilities for some reason. I don't know that, that's a historical choice, not mine. Um, but uh, we, we've had to move some of the labor from public works into that department and then Austin's time is basically what we've switched out of the Cal recycle grant and back into four, department four, twenty five.
Four twenty five, not four forty five?
Not four forty five.
So he's a, he's a facility, he's a park facilities. Yes, cuz he's in charge of skate and some other things, but.
But not rec, okay.
Yeah, it's, that doesn't make sense.
I know a lot of these things don't and it's.
Well, yeah, because like.
It's very counterintuitive in a lot of points.
It is.
Government accounting.
Yeah, rec went up um, forty five thousand and parks might not, twenty five thousand. But whatever.
Got it.
Uh, to follow up on that, if you're, um, you're saying that public works hours had been assigned to public works, but have now been moved to park facilities. Because that's where the time was. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Um, looking at parks, at public works, it also seems to be uh, an increase there as well. So it would be even larger had you not moved those, okay?
Yes.
Um, where we are looking at an increase. Um, I think last year it was budgeted for sixty two thousand. And now you would have taken out more of the public works folks. We have an actual uh, projected actual very close to that. But for the coming year, you have eighty four thousand. So even though some folks have been taken, or the hours have been taken out of public works, we still have a twenty thousand dollar increase.
That accounts for the annual salary increases that we do for cost of living. And then also um, our operators, when they earn more certifications, that earns more pay uh, commensurate with that. Otherwise, we risk losing them to more, more well budgeted institutions.
Um, on page twenty five, I was just curious about the capital outlay um, for, and our expenditures for the Powers Creek District Fund thirty six. Um, capital outlay was projected to be seventy seven and it was a hundred and eleven and now we're we're guessing we won't have any.
Mostly because, I have that written down in a note. I left that one on my desk. Um. Uh, mostly because the projects that were happening on Powers Creek District have concluded and uh, they're not we haven't like designed any new projects to go in there currently that we would be budgeting for.
And we have like a big blank spot that may be an opportunity for other state grants up in our.
We do have some opportunities there, but uh, you know, this is a picture of what we have going on now. If we get into that, then we can do a budget amendment and add it in there.
Okay.
That's what budget amendments are for. This is like your snapshot in time and then later you can amend, be like, well, the circumstances have changed. This situation has changed, we're gonna do this now.
Gotcha, okay.
So um, as you stated, this, this budget draft is as it was essentially um, on June twentieth, when it was first published for our last meeting.
The only difference being that fifteen K.
Right, so our projected actuals for twenty four, twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So based on May, May, May was the last date we pulled that information. And then we did a project, a projection calculation where basically you extrapolate it by the twelve month period. And then add the missing months to your actual.
And we're not expecting any large invoices or any uh, typical sorts of things happening. So you're pretty solid on these numbers.
Those have all been processed. All of our invoices have been processed, so this should be like pretty to, pretty accurate within, you know, ten grand, I would say.
Okay. Um. Well. Yeah, I have, I have all kinds of questions and wonderings. Um, I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna articulate all of them right now, but I'm I'm happy to hear you say that our projected actuals are pretty solid at this point.
Um, yeah, I don't see really huge changes within that. Like I said, it's probably a ten thousand dollar tolerance.
I'm happy to hear you say that we have some money coming.
We do have some money coming in. Uh, we do have revenue recovery for a couple of other things that will be due in this fiscal year that are accounted for in here. Uh, but yeah, like new grants that we apply for, new anything that we go for funding wise, that's not in here yet, but that those are still options, you know, they're not closed to us.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was reading something from Jenny Short who gave us some really good information, some good questions. And this came up and I wouldn't have even paid attention to it, but Law Enforcement Department two sixty, oh, I'm sorry, page twenty three.
Thank you.
Page twenty three for the law enforcement department two sixty and I'm, that's is it just split out contract payments? And so it's listed as employee benefits as well as salaries and wages?
It's a holdover from.
And contracted professional cert, like that's um, I had to stop for.
Yes, and then that's separate from the thing that's in the supplemental law enforcement grant fund. Which is where our primary expenditures come from.
Oh, yeah.
That big contract with H D S O.
And is that, is that near?
Yes, that's gonna be under. Let me find the right page for you. It's gonna be page ten supplemental law enforcement services fund. That's gonna be in your special funds. If you go deeper into the packet, but as far as like, that, you know, the numbers are right there. It's a hundred and eighty something that we're projected to receive. We have not yet gotten that number from the state, so I don't know exactly what we're gonna get for our supplemental law enforcement grant.
Is it pretty consistent? I mean, it was one seventy or?
It was like one eighty, I believe was the projection cuz it typically has increased by about a two percent.
Okay.
Two to three percent every year.
Okay. Thank you for that supplemental law enforcement services and as we figured out last time. You told us that that will not apply to any kind of animal control contract.
Unfortunately not.
So this um, previously I, I believe I might, well, my understanding was that department two sixty was about benefits for retired, um, retired police officers that used to work for the city.
Yes, we also still pay into the pension fund for that. That's, that's why it's broken out separately um, from the supplemental law enforcement services.
Oh. So the contracted services is, is with the sheriffs and then the employee benefits, the line above.
Mm-hmm.
Is.
That's what that is.
Retirees.
Yeah, that's the pension we pay it to.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Are we paying for the block? Thank you, thank you.
Why do we used to have one?
Okay, got it.
That would probably be the only indicator left in our books that says that ever exists.
I was just wondering if we were paying for the sheriff's retirement as.
No, no.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
So I did want to see just in general terms, oh, where was it? I think when I was always looking at parks and rec. It seemed to be about a budget of almost half a million dollars. But on the flip side, how much do you, or do we typically see in cost recovery revenue?
We see most of that and then some, um.
But how does that appear in the?
Let me look for the line item here. So our parks and recreation fees is gonna be on page twenty one, that's gonna be the, the bulk of where things come from. We also do get a bunch of like child recycle grants and random park related things that come down through our state funding. Um, so that's all accounted for uh, in your state county and other grant revenues. Some of those do get coded into parks and recreation, just not as fees. Um, and then we have.
So we have, like, if we were looking at what we had for plan expenditures, about five hundred thousand dollars. On page twenty one, you're saying we'd have about uh, well.
We've got like.
About two hundred and ten.
If I recall correctly, the total expenditures for parks and rec was more closer to a quarter of a million instead of half. Um, it was like two fifty, if I recall correctly, two seventy five maybe. Um. But uh, yeah, we've got most of that coming in through the, the fees that we get, the vending machines, the summer rec program. And then the other thing to, to keep in mind about summer rec program is that that, those incomes straddle to fiscal years.
And that's why we had such a disparity between.
Yeah, because some, some folks will pay right before June thirtieth and so that gets put in the previous fiscal year. And some people don't pay until like July, August, and then that goes in that fiscal year.
But that should sort of balance out from year to year because that always happens.
Yeah, it just depends on how much, how much of the proportion of the total happened in one versus the other.
Yeah, there is quite a.
Different every year.
Well, that's quite a disparity there. Budget for forty nine and then the actual sixteen because of that split, but it seems really like.
Yeah, it's weird that it happens that way. Um, but we've also had a little bit of decreased enrollment in the summer rec program. But most, most of this decrease is just the fact that, like, for instance, this year, we got a lot of our stuff in before ju-, before June thirtieth. So it wouldn't go on this fiscal year that we're talking about now.
Right.
Um, so we, we've had an increase in people paying earlier for summer rec programs than they previously did.
Hmm, okay.
I think I see where um, my, maybe conflating two different funds together. If we look at page twenty one, parks and rec fees, and this is a revenue. We're looking at about, let's just say, two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, whatever, last year, this year. When we go to page twenty four, I see recreation department, three hundred thousand dollars and this is expenditure. And then I see park facility for two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Um. So again, it's because the incomes don't directly code to the expenditures the same way. Uh, it, we pull from the funds differently than we expend from the fund or the, the way we get them into the funds is different than we expend them from the funds. So it doesn't always one hundred percent line up that way. Um. That's just, I, in my experience, that's just kind of how it has been. I have, I, I don't have enough institutional background knowledge to like be able to explain exactly where that comes from, but it's not an abnormal thing that I've witnessed, so.
No, you're getting there.
I'm getting there, I'm trying, guys.
You're getting there.
Absorbing all the, all the knowledge.
Yes, just keep swimming.
Um.
Uh, on page twenty eight, I had a question about the expenditures for the solid waste recycling fund thirty two, um, total expenditures going. The projection is for it to go down?
Yes, because we projected the Cal recycle grant was gonna go down and then that's why we pulled Austin's hours out of there and we.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. How was that adjustment? Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. Yeah, there's a lot of moving pieces.
What was that?
I said, there's a lot of moving pieces. It's, if it's not all immediately clicking. You're, you guys are doing better than a lot of people. I'm gonna just put that out there. Most people, when I start getting into these details. You're, you guys are doing better than a lot of people. I'm gonna just put that out there. Most people, when I start getting into these details, their eyes glaze over and they're like, not here anymore. So you have good questions and you're with it.
Well, it's still early. It's only eight thirty.
Give us a couple more hours. We're getting a little love online. I can't see from who, but that's nice.
It looks like clapping.
I think it's Julie. Yeah, thank you, Julie.
So those revenues, those solid waste recycling fund revenues. They pay for our green waste and our recycling bins are.
Yeah, the, the green waste days that we do, the four or so on a calendar year. Uh, but that's what that's fun, this funds that and uh, a couple of other things.
When you say you pull Austin's hours out of there.
We were, he was doing a lot of the coordinating, like creating the flyers and planning the green waste days and things like that. So um, a lot of his hours were getting put into that category, but now that there's less funding in that category, we're not putting those hours in that category.
Okay, thank you.
So our staff benefits, um, about half a million dollars, four hundred eighty-nine thousand.
That sounds right.
Okay. Um, and that's about half of our total wages, right? So we have like a really good benefits program.
We have an okay benefits. We are not competitive with other municipalities in the benefits that we offer. The only thing really that, because our wages are consistently much lower than compared to with other municipalities, the only real thing we do offer is benefits.
Great.
You help me with page thirty on the CDBG program income holding fund forty, forty-two. Um, so I see the number of twenty thousand in the low loan payment revenue. And then the transfers to other funds is twenty-one thousand and then projected actual and then budget is nothing. What, what was the twenty thousand about? What was?
Those are loans that we previously gave through the CBD, CDBG program and
Okay.
That people are supposed to make payments on them and if you don't get their payment.
Gotcha. Oh, okay.
Some people have passed away in the course of the program and.
Oh.
There's like a stack this big of folders of, I have to go through of old loans to see where, where we're at with them and there's currently like one person still picking their payment.
Is there any, I mean, just to explore that a little bit, is there anything, uh, any potential in there where we needed like?
Not really, not as much as there is with the other areas of opportunity I've identified. This is gonna be not a high priority to try and address right this second.
Okay.
Just due to the staff time it would take.
Okay.
Talking about from forty-four or forty?
Forty-two.
Um, okay, ask a, oh, go ahead.
There you go ahead.
This should be on page thirty-one on the water fund sixty.
Yes.
So of course I see where we have our employee salary wages and then employee benefits. But then we have two other lines, contracted professional services and other contracted services. And they're a little bit significant. Just that we can learn what are the, what's included in those two different categories.
Anytime we have a major repair that requires a contractor. That's, we have to contract out. Our public works guys are not contractors and they oversee the work. That's being done to make sure that it meets city code and cross connection policies and all of the things that go with, uh, keeping our water safe.
Is that, so, uh, there's, and there's two categories, contracted professional services, other contracted services.
The other contracted services probably, if I remember correctly, is like the SCADA system and things like that, like where we're paying a monthly fee for having a service that tells us when our alarms go off and when uh, the tanks are low and that kinda stuff.
Thank you.
Um, sorry to jump back to parks and rec. I just had a couple of questions come up. Um. So, so for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, it looks like the the salary and wages went up by twenty-five thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Eighty-two thousand. Why was that again? Have you explained it already?
I totally did at the very beginning.
That was the shift in the, in the labor costs from uh, one of the other.
Thank you very much.
Um, on page thirty-one or the waterfront, uh, back there, I just am noticing a difference between interest earned for the budget and then the projected actual and our now budget for this year. Are you seeing what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so the interest earned is where it's the money that sits in our account earning interest and we haven't had as much money sitting in the account to earn interest because we've spent it on repairs.
Yeah, but we thought we were going to.
We, we thought we were going to. Uh, it was well intentioned, but then it, the thing with water and sewer is that there are going to be those unplanned expenses and they just, they happen and you try to build in a cushion as much as you can.
Right.
But you never know what you're gonna get till you get there.
Yeah, aging infrastructure, I got it.
Yeah, a lot of our pipes are, are hitting their end of lifespan.
Okay. And then, uh, looks like we have another bump up in salaries and wages on page thirty-three for the sewer fund. For, yeah, so a little um, bump up. Did we have a change in staffing or was that standard colas or?
We're having a change in staffing. One of our former workers is now going to qualify as an operator. They held their license.
Awesome.
Congratulations, okay.
Yes, we have more people licensed to do the things.
Yeah, okay, great.
And that's for, I'm sorry, is that sewer or water?
That is for sewer, um, because they're, they are a sewer person.
Certified.
You know, they're doing the things. They're not hanging out in the sewer.
Okay.
Just cuz I'm not used to city by editing, like when we are constantly in a deficit, how can we continue to like give raises? I mean, like, I'm not trying to be, I'm just like.
Very valid question.
Not doing too good here, like, why are we?
Well, uh, we do, we do, uh, unless we find no way to pay for these raises that we, you know, then we will have to put them at moratorium on them. But they're in there because they are considered a thing that we do as part of normal business operations. And so we plan for them. And then if we, you know, find that we're not finding more grant money to pull from or we're not increasing revenues in areas we think we're gonna be increasing revenues, just that we didn't, we don't know how much exactly to project for that. Then, you know, we will have to consider a moratorium on raises. But for now, it doesn't look like we're in that dire of a situation that we need to consider that option.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any further comments or we feel like opening up to the public comment?
Um. I'm feeling, okay, but I did wanna clarify, when we do open it up to public comment, is it okay for Danny to respond to questions that might come up that we maybe haven't looked at or?
That is the prerogative of the board, of the council.
I will allow you to answer questions that you feel comfortable answering. Great.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, sewer, um, how many operating, um, sewer employees do we have or sewer operators?
I have. It's tricky cuz I have four full-time employees in public works that are, and I believe three of them are certified for different things. Uh, there's, cuz water distribution is separate from sewer dish, sewer treatment and sewer handling, I think it is, or something like that. Anyway, those are all different certifications and uh, Glenn, if Glenn was here, he would tell you exactly who has what certification. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I know we have four full-time employees total in public works.
Well, when you said we had a new sewer operator, um, I know.
Somebody got promoted.
So there, okay.
Somebody that was already existing is now promoted.
Okay, cuz we had two operators before, so now we have three.
We should have three now if we had two before, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any more questions from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up to the public. Does the public wish to speak? Yes, go ahead. Julie, I'll get you after public. Public.
The public in the room.
Just wondering on the budget, um, when I was looking at the previous year. And this is the amendments that came through and Danny had talked about the amendments. There could be amendments. And there were many pages um, of the amendment for last year's budget for the twenty twenty-four. Um, so Danny, are we looking at having any expected planning cost recovery? Because that, between that and the engineering, that was in a ninety-one thousand dollars in additional revenue than what was in the budget before. And the same, um, and the Caltrans also, there was an increase in the amend, um, in the amendments for that last year as well. So it came out to what was it, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, although one was made from a transfer in from another fund, but just ninety-one thousand just from those fee recovery. So do we look at, is there anything like that that we might be anticipating happening in this budget as well?
Um, it's, it just depends on what comes down from the state.
Okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't have a full complete picture from them yet.
Yeah, it said increase in um, greater than expected planning recovery money that we got back for engineering and.
And, and I haven't had yet a chance to meet with our accountant to process the budget amendments for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So we haven't done any of that yet.
Okay, so I'm just saying there was some pretty substantial increases.
Well, yeah, last year we had, we um, we budgeted about one million nine thousand in our general fund and we spent three, one million three hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Okay.
And was some of that additional three hundred and roughly, roughly seventy thousand was cost recovery.
Okay.
But some, some of it was not.
Okay, and I know that was a question last time. What was the actual budget deficit for last year? And what, how was that taken care of? Did, did we pay for that out of, uh, you know, like a special reserve fund?
I don't know yet.
You don't know.
Our audit's not complete yet.
Okay, we don't know.
I don't have that information just.
Okay, now.
For twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, okay. Um, and my other question was, as I was looking through budget information, have we done the audit for last year? Because the audit that was presented in October was actually for the twenty twenty-three. Year and we were late and there was a letter from the state.
Yes, we're going through the audit process right now.
Okay, all right.
And that audit process is for what year exactly?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Twenty-two, yes, twenty-two, four, twenty-five.
Not twenty-three, twenty-four.
It can't be because.
Sorry, just. So sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four's audit is in progress. Twenty, we just clo, we just closed twenty-four, twenty-five. That audit will be happening, it's supposed to start in October.
So I thought we were like almost a whole year behind.
We are, almost a whole year behind. Ideally, we get the twenty-four, twenty-five audit started in October. Okay, that's the goal.
That was, that was three minutes, um. Uh, any further questions?
I forgot handouts, but I don't know how you do this, so why just hand them to the first person in the handroom?
Oh, these are all ones, oh, one page each.
Yeah, there's two different things there. Um, so good morning or good evening, members of the council. I am Jenny Short. I was the one that emailed you late this afternoon. Um, and I just wanted to tell you, thank you for the opportunity to address you guys with my comments and questions about the budget that you're considering adopting. Um, first, I'd like to acknowledge how difficult it must have been for Danny, being a relatively new city employee, to step into the interim city manager position. And how admirable, admirable it is that she has been able to produce a budget for the council to even consider. Good job. Um, to provide some context, I am a third generation blue laker who left to pursue an education and begin a career as a professional civil engineer. And I returned eighteen years ago to raise my own children here in the town that we all love. Recreational opportunities for the youth of our community is a passion of mine. I served on the Parks and Rec Commission when my children were young and I served on the Blue Lake Field Book Little League Board of Directors for over a decade where I am currently hold the position of treasurer.
We have comment, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah.
Um, our comments restricted to the.
I was just waiting. I think, I mean, I, I'm giving you a moment to go ahead and talk about the finances, but go ahead, continue. Don't worry about that.
Well, no, this is related to your finances.
Okay, great.
Um, so Little League is a completely volunteer run organization and I sympathize with the city as the cost for providing the recreational opportunities in our community keep rising. That being said, for more than a decade, I have performed the duties of chief financial officer for the Garberville Sanitary District, which includes preparing and managing the performance of a fund-based budget just like yours. And I know how critical it is to prepare and adopt a budget that balances each year. Taking funds out of reserves to cover normal operating expenses, uh, costs is a road that leads to bankruptcy and the temptation to transfer monies from restricted funds to cover expenses in deficit funds or incorrectly allocate expenses, especially staff time. Today, I briefly reviewed the draft budget as presented and found that there are several funds that show a significant deficit, which is concerning and I believe should be modified prior to adoption. Water operations at a one hundred and eleven thousand dollar deficit for next year plus a thirty thousand dollar additional payout for capital expenditures after experiencing an eighty-two thousand dollar projected this, this year doesn't seem acceptable. This fund is the most concerning since the rates for the water charges are supposed to be set to cover all of the costs associated with providing the service. The general fund at a one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar deficit for next year, Parks and Recreation appears to be a contributor of a deficit of almost three hundred thousand dollars. Um, even if you were to take all of the grant money that she's talking about in the other fund, it still would leave a hundred some thousand dollars in a, in a Parks and Rec deficit. Um, the CDBG non-program income fund thirty-eight shows a fifty-two thousand dollar deficit for this year, which appears to be caused by a capital outlay of seventy-one thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted for and doesn't seem to be specifically identified in your bu, your budget. Um, the TDA purchase transportation fund has a fourteen thousand dollar deficit for this year, which is one of the funds that perform the least consistent with the budget. Yet the proposed budget for next year doesn't appear to make any corrections. The super, the sewer operating fund balance projected for the, this year end, this week. I'm almost done. Just give me one more second. Is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to the negative, even after significantly higher sewer sales this year than was budgeted. It was encouraging to see that the excess in law enforcement services and that the sewer fund appears to be performing even better than budgeted, which could eventually result in a positive amount.
Maybe because, if you wanna talk. Uh, I know, your three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
All right, very good information.
Yeah, thank you. I just encourage you not to adopt a budget that has the deficit. You need to balance your budget. You can't continue to operate the way that you have.
Thank you. Uh, Julie, uh, any further comment from public? Yes, go ahead.
I concur with the last speaker. It's important to, to always, always have a balanced budget of some type. Otherwise, we don't know where the money's coming from eventually. And that leads toward a bankrupt city. Um, I, I personally feel that we really need an in-depth study regarding parks and recs. And the, the information that we just provided to you indicates that I was, I was it, the testimony of people in town are, that were having less children here, and that's probably true. The other thing that is true is that I went down to a, a park and rec thing with Erin McClure the other day to do a presentation with her donkey. She was expecting fifty kids and there were maybe twenty-five of them there at the most, I would guess. And it seemed like it was about the people supervising, I don't know if they were donating moms and things or, and paid employees. I, I've just, I think we have a problem down there and I think a really hard uh, audit of that, I hate to say it, would be a money pit and it would be your decision if we wanna fund that over the top of other things, but we would look toward hopefully having these kind of programs break even. And then whatever discretionary money you have left over, if you have a good budget year, you know, you can throw money. But I really think that that, that should be gone into depth on. The other thing is, and I could be wrong, but there, there's, I believe there's metering devices that you don't have to put a meter in. In other words, if you wanted to know how much power was being used by the doghouse or when you put your skateboard park in without actually having separate meters, I think those can be a test. Strongly recommend any, any facility that's based upon and is getting a certain amount of quote unquote within their money that we know exactly how much that's caught, or close enough, or very educated. Not just a guess, but something based upon some facts. And that's how we can determine what correct rate should be for, for our leasing thing. The other thing is, um, when we have such things, we have a very large thing, you think it's something of courage or something comes here. We, we need to have rates that are proportional to the amount of use and the amount of income these things get. And I don't know if there's a, a way to get a percentage of the gate or something like that, but when you have a small little thing and it rents for has maybe ten cars parked there, for having the whole city blanketed with parking taken up. Uh, I, I think there should be ways to have different rates for the facility based upon the, need back to speak.
Thank you. Uh, any further public comment? Okay. Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead. Uh, Julie Christie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate all our prior speakers with their thoughts and input. Um, the dialogue was very similar last night at the Parks and Rec meeting, um, discussing potential revenue for the city. And I do confer with Danny, I listen, I'm so sorry to hear my donkey. I listened to a lot of the other municipalities, as I mentioned before. They'll actually break out with a lot of special study sessions when it comes down to budget time. You guys weren't really given a good foundation to start that with, but it is something I know that we'll achieve together. Um, we're just having to kind of get through what we have now. The audit is something that, actually go back and look at the letters the auditor sent. Just saying, um, that would disclose a lot of that delinquency. But I agree with the prior speakers and Parks and Rec last night. Um, you know, I spent many, many years. Um, even, even my entrepreneur-ing here on my farm, I've totally taken something that wasn't happening here. Started with a, you know, something totally new and I've excelled to being the biggest livestock, junior livestock producer in our surrounding counties. And it, and, and even your arena there, you know, many, many years of volunteering and now up at McKinleyville. So we can barter a lot of our, a need in town with volunteers. Even with block parties cleaning up around blocks, um, and, and setting up that room better that it is a meeting room, not so much a commodity room. Because all these clubs, like the saddle club, the bike club, um, bocce club, everybody has a place to meet. We can set up stuff in there that it's always able to record and, um, be auditable. And when you really have a core place that people can conduct business and get out everything that they need. We really then start to develop this, this business platform. Um, Parks and Rec should have really went back, um, prior to your guys' budgeting. And I think this is a suggestion for the next years, that they actually do a fee schedule review on all their stuff and everything they have going on. So that it's a little more like updated in reflection of the budget. We're gonna have to figure out what we owe. Disperse it in ways that we can facilitate getting funds and different revenues. I understand that. But we definitely are, I think as a community, more than willing to support, um, what's going on. So, so you guys understand, the county is in immense of debt of neglect, immense of debt. We are like a small little fry on the side. Um, I wish everybody would step up at our supervisors with their budget review because we need your support. They are what we would fall back on if we have trouble and they are nothing. They have nothing to support us. We have to support ourselves. And I think getting some micro kids in town, any way we can do that is always probably a really good self-sufficient idea. Well, yep, adios, my friends.
Thank you.
All right, uh, last call for public comment. All right, let's bring it back to council. What, uh, what do we want to do?
I think, I think we have a lot of areas that still need looked at. And, um, I don't know. I don't know when or how we're gonna do that. Um, I don't. I mean, at our last meeting, Danny, you talked about a spreadsheet you had that had a lot of information on it.
Yeah, I was looking at that and I don't really feel like that would be a great resource for you guys, since you're not accountants.
Can we, can I, can we get that?
I was told by the accountant that that is not for distribution.
Okay.
Why?
Then, because it's in accountant speak, uh, and it's, it's literally just formulas and numbers. There's no. This is blah blah blah. There's no editorializing or summarizing or any of that, but, but goes into it, it's.
Can I still get it?
You can ask the accountant.
Okay.
He's the one that made the document. It's up to him whether or not it gets distributed.
Um, can you share with us, um, Scott's part in, in building this budget?
This is Scott's work.
Okay.
I tell Scott what, what the future for us potentially looks like. He makes it numbers.
Okay. And so this, um, this, like newly identified income from Caltrans of around a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, so that is money that we should have had last year.
It should, it's gonna get accrued back to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, so it's not gonna have any bearing on our bottom line here.
It could, once he processes the payments. It just depends on how he does it. Uh, I, I'm not an accountant. I know a lot about finance. I know a lot about how some accounting things work. I am not a government accountant.
Okay.
Yeah, so like my area of expertise is very limited when it comes to that stuff. If you want to get into the nitty-gritty of like how a government accounting functions on a deep level, I need to call Scott in for you guys.
Well, normally Scott comes to our budget meetings.
Yes, he's out of town currently.
Okay.
When do we, sorry, go ahead.
I think we all have questions, so we can just.
I'll go right to them.
Oh, well, thanks. Now I'm gonna forget what I was gonna say. Uh, when will Scott have that information cut through?
I'm supposed to talk to him next week when he's back in town to see where, where we're at as far as like, you know. Because we have a lot of cash receipts that went up to June thirtieth that are not in here yet, things like that that have not been accounted for. Because we weren't at yet the fiscal year end and.
So I have a follow-up question with that before we get too far along. Um, I know in a previous open session, we talked about that, I mean, you know, thank you, yes, for getting what you did to us. I know that was hard and we still have more hard work ahead of us. So I think that this council, um, as we said in a previous closed session, will be looking at this budget again and probably soon. Even once we pass it, we want to kind of monitor it closely and make adjustments as we go.
We're gonna have to.
And, and I think, I, I want to, um, tag along or, or emphasize, underscore the point made by the previous speaker about not going in with a deficit on our budget. We may have no other choice in this point in time, if that's what we have. But I would say our objective would be to very quickly make changes so that we are not. Um, and exactly for what we're saying about the climate for us as a town, for the county, for the state. There is likely not much of a safety net, so I think trying to position ourselves as best we can to weather the storm. Um, and I, you know, it can be small things as instead of having staff labor, maybe doing some of the work with Parks and Rec. If it's appropriate to build our volunteer base, I mean, Blue Lake will come out and support it. Um, whether we're looking at reviewing the fee schedules and I think, you know, I agree that using a horse arena for kids to come out and, you know, pet donkeys is very different than having a huge event that impacts the whole town and the preparation. And I don't know if there's a sliding scale on that that says, you know, anticipated number of users, you know, below fifty X amount, over, you know. Kind of bracketed that we could anticipate that it takes more to host more.
But that's already built into the way that the schedule of fees is set up for Parks.
Great, but to get back to the point here, so what we're doing tonight, we're trying to inch closer, but we're gonna not try to live with a deficit and just say magic.
Like I said, this isn't a permanent thing. This is a snapshot of where we are at right now in time, the, and it can change. It's not, this isn't set in stone. This isn't the, the rules by which we will live until next June thirtieth. Uh, this is, this is a guideline. It says, you know, we're not, we're gonna attempt to spend our money in this way as responsibly as we can. We're also acknowledging that there are going to be other avenues where we may need to make changes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Um, I'm feeling like I would like to spend some time with the accountant, um, to and, uh, after some time has been spent to fill in some of these gaps. Cause there's a lot of gaps in here, questions, things that we don't know yet, amendments that need to be reported, receipts, et cetera, payments. So, um, this was informative. I appreciate the work. We still have a ways to go before we're gonna be able to, uh, do much. And I, I think it would be really interesting to, to talk with, to speak with the accountant about options for future reporting. That looks a little, like a little more detail in some of these other things, like other expenses. That, that phrase is killing me here with, you know, eleven thousand dollars in other expenses.
Yeah, we typically try not to categorize anything as other, the, really the only time it does fit into others. If it literally fits no other category and it's not a big enough thing to make.
Right, I mean, just, you know, again, just to get some ideas about what that might be. And I don't need your time on that right now, but just so we can just kind of look at, at some of those things. And then if there is any wiggle room, um, with any staff person who may be interested in seeking grant funding for anything that's going on, um, I mean, I know that you guys are not just like hanging out and playing cards, but, um.
Definitely not doing that.
But anyway, I mean, you know, just like Captain Obvious here, just trying to like, okay, who, how, how can we help? How can we help with this? So, um, anyway, thank you.
Yes, Emily is going after grants every time she sees some, something come up that says, you know, here's a thing that's related to Parks and Rec. And she's like, should I go for it? I'll just do, what do you need from me? Go for it, you know, I, I, you know, you need me for something? We'll do it. Uh, yeah, we're, we're definitely out there going after everything that we can go after at the current moment. And, and I, I will reiterate, SHN has been a huge partner in that. They, they are, they are. As soon as they hear there's a grant, they're like, hey, you could use that for this. How about we, you know, how about we go after that?
Good to know.
Do we pay them for their time though, I'm assuming?
We pay them for their time working on the grant, but they, they come across this stuff in their normal course of doing business. It doesn't cost them any extra or charge us any extra for them to say, hey, this is the thing that's out there. Cause it's pretty common knowledge for people in their field.
And are they doing the application, the grant applications?
It depends on the application. Uh, for a lot of our roads and things that require engineering, they're doing those applications because, for the obvious reasons. Uh, if it's, you know, just, hey, write us a nice little story about what you want to do with the money, then they kick that one to me and then I, you know, write them a nice little story.
So I'm trying to find our bottom line for last year and it seems like it's sort of in the wrong place, but it's on twenty, page twenty-four, I think. At the bottom of the page, we have our, um. We have, um, our total expenditures and our excess deficit at the bottom. Yes, so it looks like currently we're showing a twenty-three thousand dollar, um, surplus from, for last year.
That's what it, that's from the projections and that's based on the revenues from places that we haven't received them yet. So, and so is that, it's projected. That's all I can say is, that's projected.
So you're already projecting in the revenues that we haven't received to that number?
That's how it's done. Okay, yeah, that's more.
So that Cal, that Caltrans number is in there, is factored in?
That one is not for that, in that number, uh, because that one, I don't even think Scott knew about that. It wasn't, you know, it was not recorded as a thing that we had previously gone after, so.
Yeah, that's. Is it not a, a normal revenue for us?
The one, the Caltrans, like, no, that one's not. That's, that one was like a one-off thing.
I see.
Yeah, so we had not gotten it before, this particular one.
Okay. Well, it seems like we're kind of, um. It looks like we need to reduce some expenditures going forward. And it looks like we need to do that before we adopt a budget.
That's why the recommended action was for you guys to direct me for what you would like to see.
Right, yeah, so it's need to see. So I think a meeting with Scott.
All right, well, I will schedule a meeting with Scott and get back to you.
With more detailed, um, filling in some of the missing pieces. I can't think of.
Um, Jenny provided us with, um, some, some interesting, uh. Calculations of, of wages and, and benefits. And, um, it seems to me that we really need to better understand what we have here. Because it looks here like we have a total wages of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and benefits of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four. And I'm not sure if that's customary, those, um. And I'm honestly, I don't, um, I'm not even sure what the question should be here. But our wages and benefits is, is a huge number. And I understand that spread across, um, general fund, water and sewer funds. And it would be really helpful if we could, uh, if we could get a better handle on, on what we're doing and how we're doing it. And if we can, and where, if anywhere, we have wiggle room.
You know, the compensation plan and what that looks like and how that's worked out.
I mean, I don't really have any wiggle room there. We're already operating at the barest of minimums that our Calpers contract will allow. We're already having to go into renegotiations for our health insurance plan this year because our current, um, provider is not going to offer health insurance anymore after December twenty twenty-five. So that's gonna change. I don't know what that looks like yet. You know, I, the, the costs, the costs of these benefits go up based on what Pers tells me, what the insurance companies tell me. What our risk managers tell me for workers comp. I have zero control over this, right? I have zero control over this. And if I, if we offer less than what we offer now, we won't have staff. Everybody will.
Right, right, right. I don't think. I think just exploring some of the, the percentage of the benefits to the wages. And I'm, maybe I'm just obtuse when it comes to what the standard is. Cause I know that.
Yeah, we're already at the, we're already at the barest of minimum we can offer. If you're gonna make cuts, uh, unless you're gonna cut programs and, you know, things that require staff. Then that's the only way you're gonna cut that number.
Well, it seems like we might have to identify any programs that are non-essential. If we don't have a, if we don't have a, you know, if we can't factor in the income, we're expecting that. We're not sure where it's gonna be attributed, you know, we got a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we have to find. And if it's not coming in, then it can't go out. So, um, and again. I don't have the detail to say, hey, um, this is essential, this is not. I don't, I don't know what, I don't know to, uh, uh, to a level of detail that I would need to, to even ask the questions or identify anything. But it looks like we need to find some non-essential things and have a look at them.
So it sounds like our next step is that you need a meeting with Scott because you have questions that I cannot answer for you. And that's gonna be our next step. And then where we go from there, that will be up to you guys.
Okay. So is there, you mentioned dates, that we need a budget by X date?
We passed a resolution giving us sixty days to, to come up with a new budget, so we're covered now.
Okay.
Covered till when?
So.
Anyway.
August, sixty days from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-seventh.
Can, can we?
I just was gonna volunteer and ask something if it's an option.
Um, you can probably.
Will you hit me up on email and we'll talk?
I'd be glad to, yeah.
Thank you.
Especially in your waterfront. I'd like to help you figure out your water rates if possible.
Thank you. I, I welcome all help. I welcome all help.
Um, any, so is the direction clear that we're?
We're meeting with Scott and as soon as I, as soon as I get dates from him for a meeting that also don't conflict with existing dates, you guys are not gonna be here. I'm gonna send you a list of potential dates, we can have that.
Yeah, and, yeah.
I know it's vacation season right now. Everybody's all over the place.
A professional analysis of the, of the budget. Or the.
Yeah, I gave you what I, what I can give you based on my knowledge and.
Oh, yeah, no, it's great. It's a lot of work.
But yeah, there's an, an accountant for a reason. But I'm not him.
He's gonna tell us to get skinny.
And so you're aware, like, before this, like, the budget analysis looked really, really good, like there'd be no uh, reduction in anything, but like with these new numbers, it's looking a lot worse, so.
Well, we added fifteen thousand dollars in expenditures to something that was already expenditures heavy, so.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, anyway, um, so I see that, um, our next meeting that we know about is, uh, the fourth Tuesday. Which is the twenty-second.
Yes. Um, if I can't get you guys with Scott before then, that will be the. Um, if I can't get you guys with Scott before then, that will be the, the next goal date to have this conversation. But I will attempt to get you guys all in the same room with Scott before, before then.
Okay, and, um, are there any other time-sensitive issues that we're gonna wanna look at before the twenty-second? Um, we know if we have to have a meeting for some other reason.
Not currently, to my knowledge. That will depend on the outcome of Monday's meeting with H C D likely.
Okay.
If, if anything time-sensitive was gonna come up, that would probably be it.
Okay.
So that's why I also was like, how about we ad hoc for that meeting and that way we can roll with the punches a little easier if we, uh, need to be a little more time-sensitive.
Okay.
Alrighty, good, uh, motion to adjourn, I believe.
Those are always annoying.
Only because with the, um, the H C D letter obviously it could be time-sensitive. When we have formed an ad hoc, are we authorized to provide staff direction as an ad hoc? Or do we have to take it back to council? Or can council now choose to and view us with that power to make a decision if we need to have that time to keep things moving along?
I mean, I can't see where you would have to make a decision where we wouldn't be able to meet. Uh, mostly this is just to make sure that at least two members are part, at least one member, if not two, are involved in the conversation on Monday.
Great.
And the outcome of that will likely just be perfunctory and saying, hey, do the thing we already told you to do. Uh, maybe do it faster. That's probably the outcome. By looking at a crystal ball.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all right. I, it's not on the agenda, Alex. I'm sorry. If you want to email it to us or whatever, you can talk to one of us after this. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
All right, first second, all of us say hi?
Hi.
Thank you.